Morning.
We ready, ma'am? Not if we're after yet.
Isn't it early?
Okay, good evening. Welcome to December fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, planning board meeting. Uh, first item of the agenda is second chance ranch rescue ink conceptual hearing. Come on up, ma'am.
Before I start, um, would I be allowed to record this? Just a voice recording?
Yeah. I'll roll that, yeah, sure.
Alright, thank you, um.
But don't say anything stupid, anybody.
Yeah.
Well, you haven't come to vote, so everyone's listening, so that one won't be stupid.
Okay, thank you, so, hi, everybody, I'm Kristen Morrissey. Um, I'm the founder and director of a small nonprofit, um, in New Boston. We've been operating since two thousand sixteen. Um, we've saved over seven hundred and fifty dogs. We've helped a thousand to two thousand people, cause on every dog we help, there's, you know, one or two people on each side of helping a dog. Um, we've been operating the rescue out of my home. Um, I don't run the rescue for profit, I have no financial stake, I do this as a full-time volunteer. I work another job, I have kids, all that, um, and.
How do you do that?
Uh, I work from home, um, I'm in software, so I have a lot of flexibility.
Still impressed.
Yeah, thank you, yeah. Um, but the rescue is my passion and, um, we have been donating the use of our property for the last few years, we've renovated our barn, um, and our rescue has grown and been recognized for some of our, um, unique aspects and achievements. Um, we're in great standing with the state, the state actually uses us as an example, um, for quarantine processes, we've never had a noise complaint from our neighborhood, um, and overall, the, the rescue is just in a great, stable place. And now, one of the next things we're looking to do is find somewhere for the rescue to, um, fully own and have full ownership and flexibility and freedom. Right now, on my property, it gets a little crazy, you know, I have my kids running out the door, I have my own dogs, um, and then, you know, everything else that goes on in your home, right now, I share my home with, you know, hundreds of people that are coming and going each year, all these dogs, um, and there's a lot of things that are very difficult, um, for both sides, the rescue and my family, so, we're, the rescue is looking to find a property, um, of their own, and we think we found it, we've really been eyeing the land and where, just cause it's, um, a little bit, um, less developed than some of the areas in New Boston we were looking, and we use Wear Vet, we've been using them for a number of years, so, the property, um, that we've fallen in love with is on Lull Road, it's, you know, big, beautiful, open land, we like all the wetlands, and I know a lot of people might not, but we do, we really like the privacy it gives us, um, and all the natural features, and then, the, the road not being built up, um, kinda feels quiet, like our road right now in Joe English, so, we think that this property would be great for our nonprofit, um, and we wanna build something that kind of, I don't wanna say blends in, but it, that it fits in the neighborhood, um, so, kind of, I included in my conceptual drawing, uh, a house, it looks like a house, but really, it's just like a big barn with some features that a house would have, um, we'd like to build that and move our operation from New Boston to where, um, we're not looking to grow to a large scale, we wanna replicate the operation we have right now, um, and find somewhere for the nonprofit to, you know, have for themselves, someplace that they fully own, um, so I think I'll pause there, that, that's my intro about what we do, why we're doing it, and why we wanna move to where. It's for my family, but also, it's, it's for the, the rescue, for the nonprofit, this is what the rescue needs to be most efficient, is, um, a place of their own.
Where are you in New Boston right now?
So, we're on Joe English, which I, I think of it as.
I was in the Monver, yeah.
Yeah, uh, yeah, I think of it as a special road.
I almost bought a house there.
Okay, yeah.
Thirty-five years ago, or whatever it was.
Yeah, so it's populated, there's neighbors, I mean, we have a neighbor that's right next to the barn, um, so noise is a big thing that we are very aware of and we're very careful about, cause we don't wanna disturb people, um, so that's another benefit of Lull, that it is even more quiet, and we could actually set the structure back even further off the road to provide more privacy, um, and safety.
How many people a day you think you're gonna have there? Yourself, of course.
I would say one to five, um, we have one to two people working a day, someone would be living there at all times, um, you know, maybe a volunteer, maybe a visitor, um, I bring my son to daycare and wear, so I would love to be able to pop by every day, I'd say a handful, but this is not like an MSPCA, large operation, um, this year, we've helped forty-five dogs, so, that's.
What do you do with the unadoptable ones?
So, we have a extensive screening process that helps us to not take in unadoptables, and I know that's not like a bright and cheery answer, but that protects us from taking in dogs that we can't rehome.
Well, no, I'm, I'm glad to hear that, because then you end up just accumulating dogs.
No, yeah, we don't, we don't get into that, um, and we have dogs that have been with us six months, ten months, a year, um, and that's kinda what we're known for, is we take dogs that most places won't, um, because, like, the person running it is not in it for profit, like, there's no quota we really have to meet, and all the funds that we've raised to buy the land, we've raised through fundraising, events, adoptions, um, so that's really the only, it's, it's a very different structure than a traditional shelter, where they're just taking in dogs, taking in dogs, cause they have, unfortunately, the funding.
Is related with how many they take, take in, right?
Yeah, yeah, so.
How many dogs at one time you have?
So, we started out having, um, oh, well, I'll answer you and then I'll backtrack, but right now, we have typically ten to fifteen, um, and that's a lot, but right now, we're in a place where we're, we're trying to do some fundraising, um, for this land and for this future, um, five to ten of the dogs are in the rescue, the other five are boarding dogs, so people that, typically alumni, like, if you adopt a dog and then, you know, your dog doesn't do well in a normal boarding facility, people bring their dogs back for boarding, um, so that's where some of our capacity is right now. Typically, five to ten in the rescue, and then, I just wanna overshoot it and give you higher numbers.
Oh, yes, definitely.
Just so you can have the full picture.
Don't tell us three and come up with twelve.
Yeah, no, I, yeah, I'd say like five to fifteen is the range, and right now, um, right now, in our barn, it, there's ten, we have a couple puppies coming this weekend, so it will probably go up to fifteen.
Yeah, make sure you put in the application that you board also.
Okay, yep.
But you don't breed, there's no?
No, absolutely no breeding, did you say breed?
Yes.
Yeah, no, no.
And when, when you adopt the dogs, are they neutered?
Most are neutered, um, my, I don't wanna get into all the different, um, views on spay and neutering, but we do believe in spay and neutering, I believe in spay and neutering after animals have matured.
Mm-hmm.
So, a lot of the puppies we're taking in, we're trying to take puppies in that are not spay and neutered, we have people sign a contract, um, and then we refund them a portion of their fee when they provide proof of spay and neuter, that allows the dog to mature before they are altered, um, so, but we do absolutely believe in spay and neuter, I'd say, you know, seventy-five percent of them are just younger puppies, we're, we're trying to kinda take the opposite approach.
What do you do with the waste?
We have a waste system, um, that comes every two weeks, Pennard waste, um, so we remove, um.
So, it's just trash?
It's just trash, yeah.
Goes in a dumpster?
Yep, yeah, and that is, um, what we believe is best practice, but, you know, we're always looking for better practices for waste removal, someone did introduce us to like a composting system for waste, but I just worry, why would we put that back into the ground, um, so we take it off-site.
Yeah, we get a lot of wetlands around, probably not the most, probably not the best place to do composting anyway.
Yeah, no, exactly, yeah.
Definitely least liable.
Yeah.
There goes any questions?
When we presented to New Boston, they also asked about like hours of operation, quiet hours, um, so we operate typically six AM to like eight PM, nine PM, um, but the dogs are usually quiet after like seven or eight, um, and again, someone's going to be living there, like, that's one of the key parts of, and one of the differentiators about how we're running, this is supposed to be like a home environment for the dogs, um, so someone would be living there to help, you know, reduce any noise or chaos, um, you know, in the evening.
You can have living quarters in the barn?
We want to have living quarters in the barn, yeah.
That could be a problem, is it attached to the house?
Yes, so if you, yeah, the conceptual design, the first building that we want to build is, some people might call it a barn dominium, um, that feels like a fancy term for, you know.
Well, we could treat it like an ADU or something.
Yeah, yeah, so, we wanna have living quarters upstairs.
Yeah, as long as it's attached to the, to the house.
Structure, yeah.
It could be, I mean, we can consider like an ADU, it could.
Well, then you got the seventy bucks.
It can only be seven, it can only be seven hundred and fifty square feet.
Okay.
If it's bigger, then it's gonna be like a duplex, and then you've got other issues.
Okay.
Yeah, but you're, you're talking about residential, I mean, this is really a commercial use, so it must change the possibilities, zoning separate.
Of an ADU? I don't think so, any, the, the law and, if you use any, any residential structure, and the house is a residential structure.
That, yeah, well, it is, but it's being used commercially.
Yeah, I don't see a reason why they couldn't put an ADU above it.
Oh, oh, I don't, I'm not disagreeing with that, I'm saying I don't think it has to be attached.
No, it definitely has to be attached.
It has to be attached.
Yeah.
Cause somebody says it has to be attached.
That's because it's in, it's in a residential zone?
No, any, any, any structures and where have to be attached, you can't have detached residential structures, you don't want, you only have one residential structure.
Okay, I agree, but then they could have a, they could have a separate, separate buildings with non-residential use, don't have to be attached.
You can have a detached garage or barn.
Yeah.
Uh, okay.
But you can't have detached ADU, we would like to be able to do that, but we haven't got there yet.
Yeah, it's not our choice that we don't allow it, it's in the zone.
I know, I just checked your, I just checked your garage twenty-three with thirty-one or something like that, so you're under the seven hundred and fifty square feet.
So, if we built that, that you're looking at right now, and then let's say in five years, we wanted to build a detached garage, would be, would be allowed to do that?
Yep, yes.
Okay, good, that makes me comfortable, that makes more sense, you're saying you can only have one living?
It, all the space that, with this, is living space has to all be attached.
Okay.
But, but if it's a garage, a separate, and have living space, that could be detached.
Okay, so you can only have one living space structure, all the living space has to be attached?
Right.
Got it, okay. But this question reminded me of another question, I just wanna make sure, the way that the property's zoned, I wanna have, um, confirmation, we wouldn't have to go through any sort of rezoning? No? Okay. Right now, in New Boston, at my house, we're zoned, we're, I think we're rural agricultural, and we just got the exception, we didn't have to go through rezoning, and I wanna make sure that's the same here, um, cause I thought I.
I can see that's allowed use, we have kennels, we have kennels in the residential, so I don't.
Good, yep.
I don't see a problem with that.
Good.
What, what is the zone?
The zone of Lull is rural agricultural.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Pretty across middle peco, middle campground.
Yeah, this sub did just done, what, three years ago, maybe?
No, it's, it's not part of that.
No, it's a, this, this was the one that's done like three, I remember, I remember somebody talking about the steep slopes and protecting.
I think that one's been around a little while.
Using the butter.
No.
That's what I remember, and he's talked about the steep slopes.
Oh, okay.
I think it's a good idea. I don't know how you do it, but it's a good idea, well, you're young yet, so that's, that helps.
It's a big team of people, there's a lot of volunteers, and a lot of, actually, one of our employees is from where, um, so, it's a big team of people.
Keep in mind, when you do it, you're gonna need to couple some parking for the employees and.
Yeah, and that's something that I, was, when I walked the property with the seller, that's something that became very clear when we walked it, like, the way the property has the different, um, to me, it's like the variation of the property. I think lends itself to, we could have a nice parking area in front, a gate, a driveway back to the property, so that it, um, sorry, not property, the structure, so that we could, build in.
But you're talking five people a day, so you need, maybe six or seven parking spaces?
Right, yeah.
Your employees plus maybe two spots or something.
Yeah, yeah.
Five or six parking spaces, that's.
Yeah.
It would just be nice to be able to, um, limit the.
Access?
Yeah, access and unexpected visitors, cause that, that is something that does happen at my house, but we have signage that says, visit by appointment only, we have a gate, um, so that deters people.
Give one of those signs that says, protected by Smith and Wesson or something like that.
Yeah, right.
Or maybe Chevron Shepard.
George, yeah, that, that would work, that would help too. I don't see a problem with anybody else. Any more questions for us?
No.
Great, good luck.
Awesome, thank you.
You do need a site plan, of course, you really do, okay.
Yep.
Great.
The fun begins, right, thank you.
Thank you, good luck. The next item on the agenda is the.
Greg, she had a quick answer?
I think they came up with another question.
What?
She had a quick question for you.
Oh, what's that?
How will we get notified by this town?
Yeah, it's a conceptual, so there's really no notification except the, except the minutes? That would be about it.
Thank you.
Okay? Okay, the next item on the agenda is, uh, I can't read my right, read the right, Bishop Protestant Episcopal Church in New Hampshire, one eighteen Center, Center Road? I don't see anybody here, so we're gonna put that one, we'll put that one over there for a while. And next, we have Joseph Dussault, lot line adjustment, I believe? That's gonna be, I got a question for you, Mrs. Applicant.
Yeah.
Why didn't you just do a road widening, roadway widening easement and not go through this?
Cause we, this is where we wanted to.
Okay. Perfect answer.
Yeah. Simple, the point.
Make sure you state your name and address for the record, please.
Want to know your new name?
So, we applied for a lot line adjustment, um, I'm Naomi Bolton, I'm town administrator, but I also have permission on behalf of the family to speak and represent them, um, we went to, um, this is located in the village at the corner of Riverdale and River Road, everybody I think is familiar with it, Benji's probably the most familiar with it, um, what we did is several years ago, I think Benji had approached, uh, Mr. Dussault to, um, make the intersection really more safe, so, with that being said, um.
I don't know what the good is gonna do, is a tele, be a telephone pole in the middle of that.
No, there's not.
No, oh, is that the stop sign that's shown there?
It's going, it's going from telephone pole to telephone pole.
You're right, there's not, the other thing must be the stop sign or something.
Yeah, that's a stop sign, yeah, so, uh, we, because of the size of the lot, it's zero point four acres, so we made a trip to the zoning board, cause we made a non-conforming lot, more non-conforming, by taking five hundred and ten square feet of the triangle out of the lot to make his lot now point three nine five acres, um, that was approved on December fifth. And all we're doing now is going to step two, and then we'll have to go to step three, which is a donation process, and step four to do the deed and record the plan, so, we still gotta, we're about halfway there. And I didn't draw the plan.
You didn't, why?
We hired Keith Nordstrom to do the plan on behalf of the town.
So, this gentleman reached out to me when I was the director and wanted to talk to me and offered this up, wanting me to come down and look to see if it'd make a difference and how much I needed, and, uh, I drew it out with the telephone poles, cause you can't go behind them, I mean, more would've been better, but it didn't go further, and since it's known through trucking through, uh, New Boston and Goffstown.
They all turn that way.
Have to take that corner, which is, you know, over a hundred degree turn, and, and those, those axles really tear that intersection up, so, it will help, it won't be perfect, but it will certainly help, and he just wanted a cup of coffee, so I went down and had a cup of coffee and visited him one day, and taking this long to get this, to this point, but, in, in my opinion, it would, uh, it's too bad it didn't happen before I paved that intersection there, but it, it certainly would help cut those shrubs for visibility, and I, I don't, only person that's losing is the gentleman that's giving up the small piece of land, I mean, it, anyone that travels that way will benefit from this.
You gotta fill it full of more concrete?
It's paved now.
Now, the new, new turn, when you tighten it up, the inside, are you gonna repave it?
That'd be, well, that'd be up to the new guy, not me, but. The intersection now is pavement, so.
Yeah.
If it's gravel, it'll be better, nothing, I mean, it's paved right to the bushes right now.
Is it, yeah?
Yeah.
I haven't been over there in a while.
That's a nasty intersection, my wife goes down here quite a bit.
Yeah.
You can't keep nothing with the tractor trailers turning, those triaxes, you know, and it's not their fault, they can't go the straight way, you know, so. And you got more traffic going that way right now, cause the north end bridge is, so.
The only comment I have is ZBA case number should be mentioned on the plan.
Twenty-three, twenty-three.
Where'd you say that?
It's twenty-three dash twenty twenty-three, that's the case number, but we can add that to the plan.
It should be on the plan.
We can do that, well, I was only here in a week's time, so.
And it should have a planning board approval book.
You can do that, too.
Did you check this plan?
My spare time.
You thought I'd do?
Yeah, I wasn't gonna say anything.
I don't know, I'm gonna either.
What was it?
Technically, you're making a lot less than five acres smaller, so you need state subdivision approval.
I wasn't gonna say anything. Just throwing another thousand dollars out, the town's gonna have to pay.
Oh, too worried about that, first of all, one, you just have to be set, planning board approval book, note the ZBA case number. We also have any questions, comments, concerns? I'm, I'm getting there, I'm gonna open it to the public, don't worry. Would the public like to speak, sir? We should move the podium over to you, it'd been easier, maybe.
David Nelson of Ten River Road, I live right across from Mr. Dussault's, um, I don't have any objection whatsoever on that, the only concern I have is if, once it's made a lot more negotiable for the trucks, the traffic coming up from Goffstown is gonna go a lot faster, because now they're gonna know that there's no trucks on the other side of the road making the wide swing, so, I don't know if there's any, some type of a three-way or four-way stop sign that could be put there, you know, three-way, just so the trucks coming down, they could still make the corner, but get Depot Street, River Road, which is a stop sign now, and put another one coming up from Goffstown, otherwise, I don't see a problem whatsoever, we're just gonna make that intersection safer, cause coming out of Goffstown, come sit in my yacht for a little while, you can see what it is, Naomi saw it, but, thank you very much for your time.
It, it wouldn't be a bad idea to put a stop sign there, come in North River Road there.
We've talked about it, just never did it, I guess, but it isn't a terrible idea.
No, I just, I just want a way to, you know, try to, it's not just my yacht, it's people coming off of Depot Street also, you know, it's just a crap shoot for everybody right there, I'm amazed that nothing has seriously been happened already, but, no, I think it's a great idea to take that corner out like that, you know, cause now you gotta pull all the way through the stop sign anyway, to see if anybody's coming down over the hill.
That's it, a car has trouble making that corner, let alone a truck.
Okay, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, um, my name is Emily Beantone, I live with Jeff Howard at Eleven River Road, um, and I absolutely agree with every single thing he just said, um, in my opinion, any eyes on this intersection are great for us, because it's really dangerous right there, um, cars go really fast, and, um, it's, it's, it, I'm actually amazed nothing has happened either in the ten years or so that we've lived there, so, yeah, um, anything we can do to make that intersection safer, and adding a stop sign coming from Goffstown would be amazing. Thank you very much, I have no objections.
Okay. No, my wife's dog sits right down the road, so, I know that intersection pretty well, between what, between the other project we had up there, and, and my wife being there, I know that intersects pretty well now, thanks to you guys, yeah, it's, it's nasty. In a.
It's always been a problem coming out of Depot Street.
Well, even River Road's kind of, if you're turning to go up Riverdale, it's tough, it's real tough.
Try walking.
No, I wouldn't do that, I wouldn't do that right there.
I'll make a motion, we approve the plan subject to the ZBA case number being added as a note, monuments need to be set, they, the, the plan says, designated they need to be set, but they need to be set. Then, I don't know if we could say this, would recommend a stop sign northbound on, is that still River Road coming from the Boston?
No.
Park Station Road? Park Station Road?
Is it Parker Station Road in where, or is it Parker Station?
No, it's Goff's right in the line.
Yeah. Yeah.
I guess they all did.
There's about a hundred foot, a hundred foot stretch of road there, we don't know what it is.
Yeah.
I don't know, you got Goffstown that plows the corner through New Boston, you know what I mean?
I don't know if there's more to the stop sign thing, though. There's gotta be a public.
No, I know, I'm just recommending that you...
Well, I agree, a hundred percent.
That's all we can do, it was like, no, the ultimate once, but I mean, I think we can recommend it.
I just meant part of, not to hold this up, I didn't wanna have to wait months for that.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm just making a recommendation, so like, man, that they look at putting a stop sign there.
It's, it's Riverdale Road.
I always thought, thought it was, but.
Riverdale Road goes through the intersection.
It goes through the intersection.
So you go on three, oh.
But it goes on in New Boston that little bit.
You said New Boston?
Yeah. And the planning board approval block be added to the plan.
Okay.
Clicking the block, yes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, congratulations whoever you are. Okay. So now into the fun stuff. I did. We're done. Christmas? Is that your Christmas present?
Yeah.
No.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Let's do this one last. Zoning amendments. Do we need to act on this? What's that?
Not here.
Not here? If they don't show up, I'm not gonna act on it.
It's just conceptual or not, yeah?
Yes. If they show up, I'll bring it up, if they don't, we'll know. So I sent a couple emails around. I'm gonna start with the easy one, private road one. Cause that's the easiest one of the bunch. I handed out copies to everybody, I believe.
Which one is the easy one?
This one.
Add a definition to Article four point one, the policy's add a definition to Article four point one.
This is in response to the, a couple years ago, we passed the whole private road ordinance and how the planning board can do a conditional use permit to allow a private road, create a private road, and also to grant building permits on a private road. Unfortunately, a couple years ago, we did not add it, the definition did not get added, we were a couple years ago, but anyway. The definition did not get put in there, so the definition of a private road does not exist. And we, I, the board, whatever, did not catch seventeen point one point one saying, no building permits for new homes shall be issued on any class five or private road.
Six, six.
What?
V and I is six.
It isn't. That was a, that was a mistake like five, six years ago.
No, but that's right.
No, that's right.
Five, six.
I said five.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm really tired.
No, what you wrote there is correct.
Yep, except I crossed that road on the one I gave everybody.
Oh.
I didn't mean to cross that road. Okay, I typed, I typed it right, I can't talk.
Correct.
Okay.
I have a question as to whether we need to refer to Article thirty-seven, so that the constituents of our community understand why we're doing this.
I think we should be able to explain that in the mailer without doing it in the article.
Okay.
Can I, I'm usually put a paragraph in there? Come on, leave it as is?
As is. We'll accept it as is.
I would just recommend you take out the period after the VI, so that you don't have a period followed by road period.
Yeah, that period needs to come out, then, then the road with the period needs to come back.
We can, we can do that by January, that's a typo. But I'll do it. Get rid of the period, send the word back to Naomi, got it? What else we got here? Let's let Bruce take over.
We need to officially act on it?
Not yet.
I just need to have something where I know.
Verbiage. We discussed at the meeting, we had the verbiage to post.
So I've been having Tony put some stuff together for the last month or so on campers. This is the one that's, the highlighted one. He, um, he's been struggling with, with what to do about people living in campers around town. Because he, we don't have a clear ordinance that prevents it. So.
Any issue is subject, by the way.
Issues, what happens with the storage that comes out of them, because...
I just have a question to the details that were pertaining to the property across the street from him.
There's no particular piece of property in mind for this, it's, it's all generally.
There is a, across, my, my family lives next door to Tony now.
Okay.
And directly across from both their properties is a property that has a seasonal camper on it, it's not there right now. But I know that St. Orange has been in there to pump whatever's pumped, being pumped.
There's more than one.
So, just as a
Yeah, this, this.
Point of reference that it's not just somebody's, it's a, it's an empty property, there's no house on it.
Yeah, and this applies to everything, whether there's a house there or not. I mean, this, this, this doesn't exclude, this doesn't let someone put a camper on a vacant lot and occupy it. I don't know if you guys knew this, but if I go down the street to buy a new camper today and I tell the dealer I'm gonna live in it, guess what happens? The manufacturer's warranty on that camper is null and void. Because they do not intend for people to live in the campers. Because they're not built to any building standard, they're, they're not built to any building code, they don't meet any safety codes. They throw a smoke detector in them, just, but not the ones required per code. So, they're not intended to be lived in. So, I thought about it and, and looking at everything, it, a lot of towns have a whole section on campers, I didn't wanna get that into it, I don't think we need to. So, this is what I've come up with, um, adding a whole different sec, this is under the zoning, um, special exception rule in the ordinances, and what you can get special exceptions on. So, campers, travel trailers, recreational vehicles, not located in an approved campground, so if you're in a campground, you, you don't have to worry about it. Or temporary mobile homes. And I have in here, I highlighted it, cause that, I mean, it doesn't matter to me if it stays or not, not for rent. So, my thought is, it's a camper whether we wanna allow them to rent it out for that, this period of time or not, like, this is open for discussion. And being used for less than six days in any thirty-day period are allowed. So you can use a camper in your yard for five days out of a thirty-day period. And the, the thirty-day period starts on the first day you use it, so you can use it for five days, or you can use it for two days, and a week later, use it for another two days. And, but in that thirty-day period, you can only use it for five days, and then from the first day you use it, that thirty-day period ends, you know, at thirty days, and you can start the process to five day and thirty days over again. They, not that, doesn't, the, the thirty-day period is contiguous, you know, any, within a thirty-day period, but the five days, it can be broken up in any way you want. Five days in a row, or five days, you know, a couple of different weekends.
Every other day for ten days.
Yeah. If they use it more than that, they need a, a special exception.
So, what do we do about my church office trailer?
Well, office trailers are a different, that, that was about campers, they have sentenced them, and it's not allowed, so the camper use is not allowed in commercial or village districts. Village districts are a little tight, having a, allowing camp, people to use campers in there might be a little... In commercial districts, no, there's no living in commercial districts anyway, there's no residential uses in commercial districts. So then, office trailers with no running water or sleeping provisions used for less than a hundred and twenty days are allowed, any other use will require a special exception, so if you've been using one like that at, at the church.
Fifteen, fifteen years.
Well, that's kinda grandfathered, cause this ordinance is gonna take effect in two weeks. So, there's nothing in here saying, nothing's grandfathered. So, an office trailer is not allowed in village districts, because again, they're kinda smaller, tighter districts. That, I mean, they could get one with a variance, but...
But I'm exempt because of grandfather?
Right.
Cause I'm in both?
Right. And then, it was kinda, this next thing, this last highlighted sentence was, um, I kinda did a search for it, just to make sure they didn't, we didn't have something in the zoning going, it's about temporary emergency housing. And believe it or not, the only place temporary emergency housing is allowed is the Clinton Grove Village District. Which, it's, I mean, it's constructed bizarre, that's the only place I found it. So, this is allowing it essentially in any district. Which if some of the house burns down, I'm not gonna tell them, you can't put a temporary place to live in while they build your new house. I don't think anybody here would either. Um, but I, it was a good opportunity to add that in, because it's obviously missing, and it'd been being allowed anyway.
Seems like enforcement would be the problem.
Well, enforcement's always a problem, Chuck.
Yeah.
And, 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 I mean, you could say that about any zoning article ever written. It's the same as any other zoning article.
Yeah. I, I guess my biggest concern, and I, I understand why, I believe, I understand, I haven't had any conversation on you guys, but I understand why this is being brought up, there's people that are living on...
And the Airbnb being them and everything else.
But this is, is, you know, a little personal, uh, experience, I guess, my family lives a long ways away, and when they come, they come two, three weeks at a time, and I've borrowed a camper, and they come inside to shower and use the restroom and stuff, but they certainly are there more than six days out of the thirty, cause there isn't room for five other people in the house.
Well, some, some, some towns have a day, a daily limit per, per year. Some have done it on a monthly, I mean, and I, I always think about that, I mean, Greg and I kinda talked, and, and that thought crossed my mind. And, you know, if somebody wants to have a family gathering on the Fourth of July weekend or something, and they got four relatives that show up with campers and they stay for a week, it takes a while to enforce something.
Don't go there.
By, by the time...
Don't go there.
By the time anything with enforcement comes along, they're gone.
Don't go there. Don't go there.
That's, that was my thought on that.
Kinda like the speed limit.
Yeah.
I guess I'd just like to see the number of days stretched so longer, I, I don't think this should be...
I put these in here for talking points, if we wanna adjust the days, I have no problem with that, I mean, let's, let's talk about it.
What did, what did we have for days for, um, the language we were talking about for short-term rentals?
That was, that, that was just...
Less than a hundred and eighty days, right?
Right, but that was, because that was, um, kinda tied with the state rooms and meals tax, and that's how they determine.
Okay, so what if we, what if we suggest the six days be fourteen?
I don't, I don't care, I mean, whatever the board feels is comfortable with, I mean...
Yeah, that's a little long.
More reasonable, and then, then you get some boundary on each end side of it, so to speak.
So I got a question, if my, if my in-laws come over with a camper and park it and they leave eleven days later, then my brother comes up with his camper the next day and parks it for eleven more days, am I in violation?
I would say you have two different settings, two different situations.
That's what I'd say, too, I mean, you'd have to prove that it's a different camper.
If it's, if it's guests coming and taking, bringing a camper, that, that's not really the, the issue. Right, I mean, and I don't think that's an issue with anybody, the issue is the ones that are there all the time.
The number of retirees that go to Florida in the winter and then come up for a month in their motorhome and either go in the house or they somehow tie into the septic.
If, if we extend the six days, we might wanna look at extending the thirty days, too, to give somebody more, they could be there longer. But the window between, they could be there longer again is further away.
Okay.
You know what I mean? And if we make it, and the way I have it is, we wanna be one day more than what we're thinking, so no more than fifteen days, which gives them fourteen days.
Right.
And maybe make it sixty days or something.
Yeah.
So if you got somebody that wants, huh? Yeah, but they can only be there for two weeks out of the sixty days. So that, that, I mean, it's somebody that's...
What's wrong with somebody being there two weeks every month, May, June, July, August, September? What's wrong with it? It's not a permanent, permanent residence.
Isn't this where Airbnb kinda?
Yeah.
Not for rent.
Pardon?
Not for rent.
That's why I got in here, I got...
Make sure it's not for rent.
Not for rent. That's kinda why I threw that in there.
Yeah, and you're not getting specific to say it's not an Airbnb, it's not VRBO, it's not your bed and breakfast, it's not, it's not for rent, period.
Bruce, Bruce sent this to me, I called him up right away, why'd you say not for rent?
It kinda takes that completely out of the...
Yeah, it does.
Yeah. Have you wanna make the six days, six days, fifteen days, I'm, I'm, whatever.
I don't have a problem making the six fifteen.
So I think the thirty should stay the same.
Yeah, I do, too.
Who's, who was just the starting point here?
Yeah, no, I think it's good.
So you're saying...
Addresses the issues without...
Without really taking something away.
Yeah, yeah, you're not taking anything away, you're just giving some guidelines.
Right.
So what are you calling an office trailer? What are we calling an office trailer?
We don't have a definition for it, you know?
We got travel trailer.
Yeah, we probably need to have a definition for that, because you've got a trailer at Bronny's Pit that would be exempt, but it's there twenty-three sixty-five.
Well, I guess we've come up with a definition of office.
When, when we talked about it, I assumed we were talking about the office trailer was gonna be
Like a job site trailer.
Construction. Like a construction trailer.
Right, exactly.
No more if we put that word in there, put construction, I don't know.
We could put office slash construction.
Or... How does that work when you, for instance, for us, we purchased a used William Scotsman sixty-foot by twelve-foot trailer that we've been, had been using for our office space as well as Sunday school classroom space. We haven't been doing this more storage now, and if anyone wants a trailer, you're free to have it, but, um, but that's kinda how we've been doing things of late. So you'd still need a special exemption if you wanna go and do that, which...
You have restrooms and all that kinda stuff in there?
Restrooms and it's just...
There's no running water in it?
No running water.
And there's no sleeping provision, so it, so it meets those two criteria.
Someone wants to sleep on the floor, but there's no beds.
Right. So, by this, you could get a special exception for that.
Right, what, what you get, what are you getting that special exception for?
For having it there longer than a hundred and twenty days.
That was gonna be my next question, cause that's not what, that's not how I interpret this.
No, it's, it, this is, if, if it's, this is, this whole section is things that are allowed by special exception. So, it, we're saying, it's, if it's less than a hundred and twenty days, you don't need a special exception, you only need a special exception if it's more than a one twenty, or a one twenty more.
You say any other use.
Or if it's in...
You don't say an extension, you say a use.
Or if it's, but they're not allowed in the village district, so if someone wants to put one in the village district, they have to get a variance.
No, the way I read this, if I have an, a trailer with running water, I need to get a special exception. If I wanted to stay for a hundred and twenty-one days, I need to get a variance. That's the way I'm interpreting this.
I, I'm, I'm visualizing.
Now you need a special.
The few office trailers that you see around this town that mainly they're the offices for the garages.
Right.
And they're there three sixty-five. They don't have running water, they don't have sleeping provisions. They're likely to get their computers, but. The, the four or five I can visualize in my head are, that's their office for three sixty-five.
Yeah, I know of a couple.
Yeah. But what would they do? I mean, becoming a special exception, what is that? What's a, what special exception they put in for?
Just to have it longer, they'd have it longer than a hundred twenty days.
Does this have to be renewed or would it be in perpetuity?
No, a special exception, they could get it in perpetuity. Or they could get it with a time limit on it, if it's like a temporary situation. All depends what their, what their situation is.
Yes, I don't personally have an issue with the time limit as long as it doesn't have sleeping provisions or running water.
That's why I put those there.
Other than that, I guess I don't care how long it's there.
The running water thing, I'm not so sure about. I mean, on the early, you'd hook a holdup probably.
On the office trailer? No, usually they don't have bathrooms.
Well, I'm running water. I wasn't thinking of a bathroom so much. Just have some water to wash your hands.
Yeah, usually they got like a, like a three gallon bubble or something for.
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I've always said.
That doesn't run?
No, it's, it's not hooked up, it's not hooked up to anything exterior to it. And like, that's the one Benji's talking about, they don't have running water in them either.
Instead of saying any other use, could you say an extension would require a special exception?
What are you saying any other use?
Office trailers with no running water or sleeping provisions used for less than twenty days, a hundred twenty days are allowed, any extension, any time extension, something like that. It's not a use, you're not talking about a use, you're talking about more than a hundred twenty days.
Okay, yeah, instead of any of those, we put um.
I can't think of the word right now.
Longer time limits?
An extension of time would require.
Yeah, I think that. An extension to be a hundred and nineteen days because it's less than a hundred twenty days.
I'll make it one twenty-one to fix that. An extension in time, use time. Would, would require.
I just have to think about it.
Will require a special exception.
Should we make. Nineteen point one point eleven A be campers, B be office construction trailer, C be emergency, D the time period. Commence on the first day of use. Well, you're really stretching this thing out. So then it's one ordinance, but then it's A, B, C, D.
Well, the other one, like the ADU one goes um.
It goes on forever.
Nineteen point one point ten, ten, one, ten, two. I think we want to keep with the same numbers, schematic as that.
Eleven point one, eleven point two. That way it's not hidden. So many cruising through here with like, oh, it just addresses campers because it's at the beginning of the list. I'm, I'm safe for whatever.
Yeah, I could break it up into different sections for the different sentences.
So you're saying the beginning of the word office would be nineteen point one point eleven point two?
Yeah.
And then the emergency would be eleven point three and then that statement for purposes of this ordinance, the time period. Commence on the first day of the use would be point four because then it covers everything.
Well, yes.
Right in the second sentence, can you eliminate the word temporary?
Can you do what?
Eliminate the word temporary. Just a mobile home.
No.
No?
No, mobile homes would, they're, they're, but they're required to be in a, on a separate lot all hooked up or in a mobile home park, right? I mean, you can have a mobile home on a site as long as it's all hooked up to sewer and everything like that.
So is it necessary to have that statement there?
I mean, I could take the temporary mobile homes right out.
Because it's dealt with.
With the emergency manufactured housing thing. I could. I mean, that, that was, I, when I get that other part in there, I was debating whether that needed to be in there at all, so I could take that right out.
Yeah.
Campground common not for rent.
Yeah.
Well, glad I gave this to you. You've got a lot of work to do yet.
It's in a Word document, it won't take long at all.
I could get rid of a period.
Won't take, won't take long to fix, it's in a Word document.
Wait till next one. I got more, I got more to fix, don't worry.
Only in my opinion, I, if I were to vote on something, I, office trailers not running water, sleeping provisions are allowed. Anything else would require a special exemption. I don't think.
You don't think a hundred twenty days is required for that?
I don't think most of your office trailers in town are there for a hundred and twenty days. Most for like a construction, like when they built the highway garage or whatever, they're.
And that, those are the ones.
Had an office trailer.
And those are the ones I'm thinking of. I mean, those are the ones.
They were there a year.
Right, but, but those are the ones I'm, those are the ones that.
When they built Dollar General, there was an office trailer.
Right, right. I mean, if somebody's gonna build an office trailer, if somebody's gonna put an office trailer in on a permanent basis. Like as a, as a component of their business.
Because what, what an office, and I don't know this answer is why I'm asking. So say Dollar General, they had an office trailer down there. I mean, part of that construction, closing out that construction plan would, that office trailer wouldn't have been allowed there. I'm sure there was a certain.
But part, that would be part of the site plan process too, because when they come in, you know, it did, would want to see where their office trailer is gonna be on the site while they're building the thing kind of thing.
We didn't know that.
No, but we've probably ought to look at that.
But then, and then it's gotta be gone.
That's the thing to consider doing site plans with.
That stuff's all gotta be gone to get the CO going.
Right, right.
Just my two cents.
Should we put the word construction before office?
Office slash construction. That way it covers both concepts. So Bruce, you got that reading, a hundred and twenty days are allowed, an extension of time will require a special exemption. Something to that effect, right?
Yep. An extension of the time. And I, I, I brought an extension in the, in.
Have a thought. Extending use of office slash construction trailer beyond a hundred twenty days will require a special exception.
And on the, that uh, sentence for the purposes of, of this ordinance, the time periods commence on the first day of use. Take the the out of there.
You've got too many of those here, huh? Take the second one just before the in-between of and use?
Yes.
Just an FYI that you may not have noticed, but nineteen point one, he changed the six point one point four.
That's because I was looking at it. That's how it is.
Yeah, four is wrong.
Yes.
It should be three, so that's what it's.
If you look at the zoning, I, I caught, I caught that when I was looking at it.
Well, when you sent it to me, I go, what, what, what do you did that for? Oh, okay. Can that be one more article, Naomi?
I don't know. I was, is your first one one or two? Too much?
It almost has to be two. I would hope we could say six point one point four or three and do this.
Oh, three, you can, I think you can do that with um, just a, you can do a, just a correction.
Oh, okay. Anything else?
Yeah, it's like, something got adjusted and something else didn't. The only thing I'll add in the bottom to it is this article is adopted on and I'll put it. X, 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 March two thousand twenty-four or something, just to make sure we have that on there.
Okay.
So I can fix that and get it to you. You'd be okay with that, right, Naomi?
Wetlands. Went to the conservation commission last night and.
It was complicated.
Yeah, it was, it was an hour and a half.
Yeah.
You watched me for an hour and a half?
This afternoon.
Oh.
Because I couldn't find it live last night. I, I wanted to see what you were doing, so.
Basically, they asked, well, asked a lot of questions and at the end. I was asked by the chairman if I had enough input from the board, from the commission, excuse me. And I said, I think I can honestly say that I don't have the blessing of the commission. But I think a couple people are okay, a couple people are against it, and a couple of people aren't sure. And that's pretty much the way we left it. They asked if I was, they wanted me to shelve the idea for a year and study it. We've done that, we've shelved, we had it, but anyway, I'll get, I'll get there. The other thing that they thought of, instead of changing the regulation, the setback in the buffer at all, was to make a conditional use permit to affect the buffer. Which I don't think. Solves the problem that I see, but that's. The problem, the problem I see, we're saying every wetland's the same. It has twenty-five foot buffer and a twenty-five foot setback. But you got wetlands that are prime wetlands, you got vernal pools, all those kind of things that should have a bigger buffer and a bigger setback. Then you got wetlands that have no value, that why are we protecting them? Why is, why are we punishing the land owner because there's this little wee dinky wetland that's, has no value?
Such as like a ditch or something?
Yeah, or, well, the one, one, one example I used above, above my house or the ditch that was dug in the sixties to prevent the water from the hill coming down to my house. It's a wetland.
Ran into that. We lost and went to fix it and you can't dig there. Grew a cattail that was a ditch that.
Yeah, I, I, I can't, I can't take the leaves out of it technically. I mean, I have to stay twenty-five feet away from the buffer. I can't cut trees down. I can't build it fifty feet of it. Well. It's a ditch in the woods. And it's same.
I did work for somebody here in town that has a ditch that was instructed by onboard to put in and twenty years later, it's a wetland and we weren't allowed within twenty-five feet. It was a ditch to catch storm runoff.
At the same time, on top of Toby, while I owned it on top of Toby Hill, there's probably a. Two hundred foot diameter vernal pool. Why it's on top of the hill, I do not know. But there's two feet of water in the spring and the wood frogs are going nuts and the ducks are all over the place. My dog has a great time every spring when I go up there. I mean, there's lots of ducks and frogs. There was water.
I would have a great time.
The black lab, of course he has a great time. That should be protected.
Yeah.
And I, I know it should be.
The thing with Dollar General is they're gonna turn into wetlands. What are they gonna do?
Yeah.
I thought of that actually. Put twenty-five, set back in the front row parking spot. Be the first paved wetland I ever saw.
It's an ice skating rink, it's not a parking lot.
Yeah, yeah, they need a Zamboni out there, yeah.
So anyway, what I did with this, to be blunt, I started out because of regulations right now. Make sure I'm saying this the way I want to. The regulations right now say that we have a wetland setback. If I can find it while I'm talking, if I can't. Page forty. I went right page then. Uh, yeah, bottom page forty. All buildings shall be a minimum fifty feet from any jurisdictional wetland boundary. Existing lots of record as of the date of this adoption of this ordinance shall be exempt from this requirement. Well, the one thing, nobody knows what date of that ordinance was. So I put in here, started out with lots created prior to March eleventh, two thousand and three, do not have a wetland setback. Between March two thousand, March eleventh, two thousand and three and March twenty twenty-four, the setback would.
Be worth today.
Fifty feet. So lots after twenty twenty-three would have the setback I'm talking about here.
So I just have a question on this. This is a, well, it's created after March twenty twenty-three, which means this year.
Whoops.
So you might want to say it.
Twenty twenty-four.
Four. Thank you.
Yeah. I thought that was a typo, so.
No, it was a correct typo. Might have been a brain cramp.
Brain freeze. And which.
So I didn't have in, last night I did not have in here the method for determining what the report from a certi, well, back up. The one comment last night was that a septic designer can determine wetlands, which is true.
But we can only determine it on the basis of what, doing our septic design.
Either way, this says certified wetland scientist in it can do the report.
Only.
Only. Great. I don't say only, but that's.
Yeah, it says that we'll determine it after a report from a certified wetland scientist and not any other way.
Right.
If that's a problem, that's a good thing.
That's a good thing. I didn't have all these things in there before last night. Um, the report shall include identification, delineation of wetland surface waters. That wasn't there last night.
Okay, let me ask you this question.
Okay.
The wetland and surface water buffering setback shall be determined by the planning board after submission of a report from a wetland scientist. What if somebody's got a lot of records, subdivision, a lot already?
Doesn't matter. A lot of record, we don't see it. They got a fifty-foot setback and a twenty-five-foot buffer.
And on a subdivision, we're gonna require all these setbacks are on the, so I'm okay with that because that means you're not, you're not asserting the power of a designer.
No.
To do a. Design on a lot, a lot of record because if we approve.
If we approved a subdivision, this one, we approved a subdivision today, septic designer can go out and do the.
Right.
Sept design.
Or if it's a failed replacement, you're still same rule?
Right.
Right. This is all, this really, this really is only gonna apply for new subdivisions.
Correct.
Which.
Period.
Yeah.
Anything going forward.
Right, right.
So I did add some language, that sentence, the report shall include identification, delineation of all wetland surface waters and assessment of the function, values, condition, blah, 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 blah. That's been expanded a little bit since last night. I only had A, B, and C in there last night. I added D and E and F. Partly because of, yeah, their comments. I think. It only makes sense to add those in there. I should have had those in there. I was trying to make it simple. It's a complex subject, so you really can't make it too simple.
So we, tell me why we changed from due to, due to, and then are.
I don't know. Because due to, due to, due to was typed last year and are the was typed yesterday for today.
I was just wondering, are we saying, is it carrying the same weight?
Yeah.
So those are three questions that need to be asked by. The wetland scientists, right?
Maybe, maybe what we should do is D, E, and F, do a D one, D two, D three. And say are the wetlands and then do a D one, a priority resource, and are the wetlands.
No, that's, that's a different question entirely. Are the wetlands a priority resource area as identified in the permitting tool? Is a different que, different question entirely, as opposed to the National Hires Bureau. Or the New Hampshire Wetland Action Plan.
Okay.
Wildlife Action Plan. It's a separate, you know what I mean?
Yep.
It's not all part of D.
I have a question pre, prior to that. Where it says due to size, location, et cetera, and shall in nature it does not provide significant flood flow attenuation. Do we need to say what the it is or is it, you know, in the other ones you've said are the wetlands a priority? Do we have to say?
Instead of saying it, say.
Does the wetland, or, or are we gonna assume people know that when we say it, we're talking about the wetland in question?
Should we put that in parentheses from this point on, it.
Should we put that in parentheses from this point on, it refer us to?
I'll change it to the wetland.
So.
We got a B again.
So, okay, so now I understand this better, so A, B, C, D, and E and F. Then are all qualified by the next section, if functionality.
Yes, I should have changed A, B, C, D to include D, E, F. The values should be A through F.
So. I don't know how this works within the dynamic of what we, everything seems to be all straight paged. Nothing is indented. Well, page thirty-seven has a one, two, three, fours indented. And doesn't carry on to yet. So I'm wondering if A, B, C, D, and F. Well, they're indented.
You're trying to talk them into a twenty-eight point eight, point one, point two, point three, point four, et cetera.
No, those need to be all. So this section here, the if functionality section. Is a subsection of A, B, C, D, and F. Right? It's not a whole separate section.
No.
It's interpretive section for A, B, C, D, and F.
Correct.
So if anything, that, just for dynamic. Visual. Editorial, it needs to be indented twice.
The functionality part?
Yes.
If functionality parts, yeah.
So that way, it's, it's, it's something that's distinctively part of that other dot part. As opposed to something new. And then the planning board shall make is, is back to the proper place. I mean, that's, I mean, that's.
Yeah, that, that makes, I'm not good at that kinda stuff, I'll be honest about that.
It's just, it's just so that this, so that this is, or even if this section is in a box.
No, I wouldn't do that, we haven't got any of that knowledge on it.
Sorry.
They are creating something from scratch.
Thirty-seven and, and there is the design and then it has one, two, three, four, and all that contains is all indented. Same thing with the cluster.
Oh, yeah, I agree, it should be indented, like you say, yeah.
Just so that you're understanding, it's still part of that previous content.
I should change the A, B, C, D, F to one, two, three, four, five, six. Not A, B, C, D, like it is on page thirty-seven.
Yes.
Told you, well, I copied this from somebody else, you can tell that, right?
And then on that functionality, it's A through, one through six.
And, and the if, if functionality, all four paragraphs get indented twice. The only thing I didn't put in here that I talked about last night is a wildlife habitat study. I didn't put that in here because of five and six, basically. Five is five, but four, five and six are new. Five and six are talking about the wildlife habitat.
Right.
So I just said.
DES is gonna make them do a wildlife habitat study anyway, right?
I'm not worried about DES, this is all about buffers. If you don't affect in a buffer, if you're affecting the buffer, DES doesn't even know about it. DES doesn't have a buffer.
True.
If you, if you affect the wetland, you're gonna have to do all this stuff.
Yeah. And again, it's. So, I mean, if, if you just for the buffer, not for the wetland, then I don't know that they're doing wildlife habitats.
I don't think I would, it's.
Like you said, because if they get into the wetland, then they're gonna have to do it anyway for DES.
Yes.
Then we could include it.
It's also a little bit of money.
Right, but then, once they do that, we, you know, we'll have it, we could. Is there a way maybe to? This is a buffer side, I don't know, no, I don't wanna do it.
Tucker's off right out of that one, didn't you?
Yeah. The, the, the wildlife habitat study Craig's talking about, you have to do that when you apply for a dredging fill permit. So, but this is, this is, someone could affect the buffer without having to. Affect the wetland, so they wouldn't need a dredging fill permit. But I don't wanna ask for that study because it's not. Because they're not doing the wetlands impacts. If it was a wetlands impacts and would need the study, but they, they have to do it anyway for DES. So I don't think we need to say you need to do that same study for, because you're impacting a buffer.
On the back page, the second if, down from the top. Where the one hundred foot setback comes from?
I don't know, I was wondering that last night, but I didn't wanna say anything. I think that was a copy and paste that I stole from somebody else. I just kept copying it.
And we're using terms that I'm only asking about because I'm that nerd. Will not significantly impair and down below the planning board shall make a finding. Will not be unreasonably and significantly compromised. How do we define that?
Makes for us to define.
So it's a case by case.
Because it's, it's subjective. I mean, unless we define it or give it a number, someone's gonna say, well, you just, that's unreasonable. What you just decided is unreasonable. Or it's, you know, it's not going to be unreasonably or significantly compromised. I mean, who, if we don't define that, I think we're opening the door for some fights. I mean, we're probably opening the door for some fights anyway, but.
Did the Conservation Commission, uh. When, dear?
I was there last night.
And what happened?
Andy and, Andy and Steve pretty much wanted me to shelve it for a year. We've already shelved it for about five years. We've already had a subcommittee with Andy, with Steve and Bruce and Tom Carr was on it. That was the same time you and I were on the Open Space Subcommittee. That was a long time ago. So.
So they didn't have any input, they just wanted to show.
Well, they, no, they want, they, they, finally, they end up saying they wanted to leave it the way it was. And to make it so you can get a conditional use permit to affect the buffer rather than going for variance.
That's not a bad point, is it?
Except you're still putting a twenty-five foot buffer or some buffer on a wetland of no value. And you're also only putting a twenty-five foot buffer on a valuable wetland.
So are they gonna submit a written? Observation or?
They have it in six years, I wouldn't expect one.
I emailed this to them tonight. Before I came, before I came here tonight, I emailed it to the Conservation Commission, told them I was gonna present it. I figured if they wanna come, they can come, we're gonna have another hearing in January.
What, what if we take out a reason, unreasonably and insignificant? Where are you at?
The plan that works out.
Danny Jean brought up. That way we're not, don't have to worry about defining unreasonable and significant. Will not be compromised, period. As a result of the proposed project. Because it, I agree that it becomes subjective. What's unreasonable? Well, for me. It's one thing, for you, it's another thing, unless we define what that means. So if we take that concept out of the statement, it won't be compromised, so.
Yeah, I think that.
How do, then we say it won't be compromised because we've got these standards? One through six and their implications there. Cause it's basically saying that we're doing our homework based upon the functionality, based upon those six points.
Yes.
And that's, it's commensurate with the following factors, and that's what makes it not compromised.
This is all, I'll get this out, it's gonna go away. How many of the six points?
That's gonna be the report.
Do we rank, do we rank it? Of it not being compromised based on how many of the six points it is or it isn't?
Well, if we're saying.
More to it than that, those six points, because the wetland scientist is going to make a report.
Let's back up a minute.
Sure.
Get back to the unreasonably and significantly compromised. DES has suggested, or this is like a year and a half ago. Or so, and it never got. That's all further got was suggested, I believe. They wanted the five hundred foot setback buffer from vernal pools?
Something like that, it was nuts.
It was something outrageous like that.
Many acres.
Yeah. So I don't know if we can say. That it will not be compromised. Cause even if, even if the wetland has one frog coming along and laying eggs in it, and you put a road past it, and that one frog gets run over by a car, you just compromise it somewhat. But even if you stay twenty-five feet away, put a road, if a frog gets run over, you're still compromising it. You know what I mean?
What if we say the planning board shall make a finding that the existing functions values and can, make a finding about or concerning. The existing function values and conditions of the wetland based upon the criteria above? Because if it meets functionality number one.
What if we just said the planning board shall make a determination of the appropriate setback?
That's a one, perfect. That way it's, there's no ifs, ands, or buts. And it's all gonna be based upon this sliding scale.
Right, in the report, obviously, yes. Just so take everything else out after. Planning board should make a finding that.
Well, functionality, I mean, that's kind of a subjective decision, isn't it?
Yes and no. There is guidelines in these manuals that I show that I reference. Four, five, and six, as to how those, the functionality of the wetland.
Were you gonna take a look at the, the, the one hundred foot setback, and there's another hundred foot setback?
I, I, yeah, that was, that was, that was a copy from Gulfstown, I messed that up.
The seventy-five was probably the same, right?
Yeah, the, the twenty-five, fifty, and seventy-five, all of them.
All of them?
Yeah, you could take out that.
Just take out the, but, but a less than a hundred foot setback, just take out those words right out.
Yeah. You taking the less than?
But a less than a hundred foot setback, that's gone.
You know, three of those.
Function values one through six above will not significantly impair the functionality, the setback shall be twenty-five feet.
Right.
Again, significantly impair.
Yes. So just, just take out the wording but a less than a hundred foot setback.
They probably have a hundred foot setback or something, and that's why they went with that.
They did, GulfTowne did.
Yeah, but we don't as well, yeah. So you taking out, it will not significantly impair that functionality?
No, I'm leaving that there. So, so. The second if functionality paragraph, if functionality, values and conditions of wetland and surface water resources are such that it exhibits some functions or values of A. One through six above will not significantly impair that functionality, the setback shall be twenty-five feet. No? Yes? Maybe?
Yes. So but a less than.
I'm deferring to those two over there.
So, so the verbiage but a less than.
Yeah.
But a less than one hundred foot setback will be stricken from all of them.
Correct.
But it comes down to discerning significantly impair, what does that look like?
Some functions and significantly.
Some functions and values of.
Yeah.
Well, some is, some, some is.
Values of, how many some, how many?
More than little and less than fifty percent.
Okay.
That's some, because little is no setback and fifty percent is a fifty foot setback, so. Significantly is somewhere between little and fifty.
Okay.
Full functions of values. Okay, gotcha. I see the progression. It goes little, some, fifty, all. So you're just taking out the hundred foot setback deal?
Yes.
Well, you're taking out the seventy-five foot one too, right?
No.
No. That would be greater than anything we have now.
Yep.
By twenty-five feet.
Yep. And I had that five thousand foot thing in there last night and I agreed to take that out. Because you can certainly have a four thousand square foot. Wetland that has.
No functions values.
Yeah. And you can have, if it has no functions values, don't have a setback anyway, so.
Right.
Why is that paragraph even there?
Right.
What's weird is, at least I think it's weird, sometimes say two thousand, sometimes say three thousand, sometimes say five thousand, sometimes say ten thousand.
Oh yeah, they're all over the board.
Yeah, everywhere.
Yeah.
I didn't see anything bigger than ten, but I didn't like.
Is that a pond?
I've seen, I've seen three more than anything.
Yeah, usually it's three, but Peterborough's ten.
Yeah.
Weird. Anything else? Don't smirk at me like that. Okay.
No, I'm not usually a fan of sliding rules, but I think it was good for this.
There's one other thing you gotta add on here. There's one other thing you gotta add.
I don't like them either typically.
But for this, I, I do, because I run in doing side work where. There was a ditch that was dug that should have a seventy-five foot setback.
But there's, there's natural wetlands that are.
Sure.
Useless.
Yeah.
That's a better term.
Okay, yeah, nevermind. I was gonna say there's something you gotta add in, but you already got the last, the last part, taking exceptions. Acceptance.
I didn't change any of that.
No. Does everyone who takes out a beaver dam get a DES permit to do so? You don't need one.
Don't need one.
Take it out by hand. Even then, you're affecting the wetland. Only if they flooded, but it's not wetland yet.
As long as you're taking just the dam and no earth, you don't need one.
Okay, but what about all those?
And they got permission to do it with a machine last time I went.
What's it called? Duck pond was down to this deep. Yeah, but it's only, the natural wetland is where it is. When you take the beaver dam out, the beavers created unnatural wetlands.
When I was director, I had DES out there and they told me, of course, I did have an offering a little deep and said, don't do that again, but they, I had DES out there and they said, if you were in the parameters of doing what you did.
It's kinda weird because it, what about all the?
I.
Habitat that's there, whether it's the beaver or not. Unnatural habitat, because the beaver's built it.
Yeah, it's unnatural, but it's.
So the pond in front of my house is unnatural habitat? If the beaver's built it, yeah.
What's the, what's the difference with beaver builds a wetland or man builds a wetland, it's still a wetland? Right?
So DES can find it.
So where does that?
I have, I have learned over the years in different towns that you wanna stay on it, because when it creates a pond, it creates animosity with neighbors.
Yeah, yeah.
I have one in town I am in now that I know people that claim they cut hay there in the sixties and now there's big houses and it's, it's a pond. But it affects their neighbors downhill, so when I pull it, everybody's mad.
There's a field on two ninety-three. You know, you know Meadow Road is completely underwater there? Two, there's a field right there, is now swamp. I remember them playing corn in that field. But you know, you know Meadow Road is completely underwater there, heading towards Joe English on the right, it's all.
Yeah.
They used to cut straw off of that.
Did they?
But that was before Route thirteen was built, Route thirteen made a dam.
Yeah.
That was built in the fifty.
One fourteen has up, up through by, uh, White Mill and stuff, Twin Bridge area, that created dam, that swamp would all.
Yep.
Did you know that if someone cuts a hole in the beaver dam and you throw like brush and stuff in the hole, like the beavers will mud it back up overnight?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, you, you, you got a little badge beaver assistant?
What you do is you put one of those hunter bear traps in that hole you just dug in the, in the dam, the beaver will not fill it up.
It was a conservation wet, wetland, we don't know who cut the hole with beaver dam. I threw some debris, brush and stuff in it and, uh, the next morning.
I always get like to yank them in the winter, cause then the ice collapses on them.
Yep.
I'll keep that in mind, Benji.
I will make the corrections on both of those that sent them to you.
Yeah.
The word document by nine o'clock in the morning.
I won't do it tomorrow, be in Vermont, but I'll do it this weekend.
Well, she told me she was gonna post it tomorrow.
No. Twenty ninth.
I'll get it to you tomorrow. I won't forget. You won't, you won't be mad at me, you'll be mad at Bruce. I don't care if you're mad at Bruce.
Bruce doesn't either.
How about we move on to minutes? How about we move on to minutes? I think they're good, I read up on.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes, November sixteenth, two thousand twenty three, as written.
Second.
Does anybody wanna read them or discuss them?
I, I read them.
Anybody else wanna read them or discuss them?
I read them.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
I read them. We have one under other business. Which you, which you have the information for?
Yeah.
We aren't gonna sign this application.
No, 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 the selectmen are.
Okay, we, we make a recommendation.
Yes.
Okay. So Duck Pond subdivision, over here. They haven't approved on the plan set that we approved whenever it was, eons ago. Thank you. Two thousand seven?
Eight. Yeah, the plans that we looked at the last time they were here was two thousand eight.
That's when I joined the board.
Before I joined.
Cause I remember Chuck signed the plan. Anyway, there was a, there was a span over the brook with no wetland permit, which is expensive to build, as Benji knows, I'm sure. They wanna take the con span and shrink it, have a wetland permit, et cetera. They showed me the plan, Keach, Keach reviewed it, Keach approved it, but they need a wetland permit now.
Didn't they come to us for that?
Yes, they did, yes.
Yeah, and we approved it.
Yeah, yes, but they didn't, they needed.
We didn't approve it, we told them we're okay with them doing it.
Okay, with the hoops, the jump hoop.
Right. So one of the hoops is a wetland permit. They need to disturb part of the town land to put in the culvert, cause they needed the open space to the town. Therefore, the selectmen need to sign the wetland permit. So they are, we are here to recommend to the selectmen to either sign or not sign the application. My only concern was, did the deed to the town allow them to disturb the, disturb the open space? And yes, there is a provision, I can pull up my phone, you can let me do, but there's a provision, accepting, reserving, I'll pull up the phone. I don't remember exactly what it says, no. I was just gonna go to the emails from Bradley, what's his name, and find the attachment.
Well, Craig's looking that up. They're still gonna need to come back here for amended site plan approval.
Subdivision, yes.
Subdivision for site plan.
So they did, just did a conceptual when they came last?
Yes, before we just, they were looking for us to say, we're okay with that, right? But, so at, at the end, they're still gonna need to come back here with a modified plan that we need to, okay.
So the D goes through all this, excepting reserving to the grand tour, which is Tebow. The right and easements to construct, maintain, repair, and replace slope and drainage facilities, fire systems, emerged temporary roads, or driveways on the property as may be necessary or desirable in connection with the development of the grand tour subdivision, including roadways, said easement, yeah. So they reserved that right.
That was my only.
Did or they did? They did.
They did.
In the, in the deed to the town, and they reserved it to them, the right, that was my only concern, right? I know on Brookshire, we wanted to do a lot line adjustment one time, and we couldn't do it because declared open space, you can't. Be a little messy with that declaration. So that's what that's all about, we need to.
So did, did you make the motion to, to recommend that they sign it, is, is that held up until they do the subdivision, or they do it?
No, they can do it now.
So they can do the signing, and it's still a little complicated for a while.
Yep.
Well, if they have the right to do it, why, what's the issue?
The town has to sign the application as owner.
You know, why do we have to, why do we have to recommend or not?
We don't know if choice.
The selectmen would like to, would like, would like our input.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
Because you're requiring a wetland permit now, or before you are not.
Right, before, before they're spanning the wetland.
They're spanning the wetland.
So they didn't have any wetland disturbance, now they're putting a, basically a culvert in it.
I'm trying to remember it, but if, if they have the right to do it, I don't understand why, why would, would.
They have the right to go through it, but they still need the permit to do it.
They still need to get the owner's signature on the application, that's all.
You would have no choice though, right?
I guess we could say no, and have Tebow sue the town to sign the application. Yeah. Not much choice.
I'll make the recommend, I'll make the motion that we make, recommend to the selectmen that they sign the wetlands application for the Duck Pond. Wetlands permit.
How about a second?
For discussion purposes, I'll, I'll, I'll second it.
Okay, discussion.
Will, will town engineer?
Keach already looked at it.
Yeah, he looked, approved it.
He's our engineer, Keach.
Meridian, Meridian is his engineer.
He's going with it.
Yep.
The conservation commission wouldn't even get involved with this.
Right.
Well, they'll probably, they'll, they will get, yes, they will get involved, cause this copy of this dredging field goes to conservation, goes to town.
Yeah, they got thirty days to reply to it, before the state even looks at it.
Conservation commission, and DES sits and waits for thirty days, waiting for the conservation commission to comment.
Pardon me?
Several copies get circulated.
Yeah, there's five or six, whatever it is.
Tebow was just looking to get moving, and there were a couple board members that didn't feel comfortable without this board's opinion, so. They wanted that opinion, so that the next meeting, put our stamp on it, so they can move forward. Or not.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed, abstaining?
Well, it's not over yet, they're still gonna have to come back here anyway, CSO.
Yeah, come back, we had to plan with the permit and everything else.
Right, right.
We don't need to talk about master plan, do we?
No.
We're gonna, we're gonna wait.
We had a plan to wait till the first of the year.
Yeah, yeah, once, once we get out of zoning. So you and I were talking calendar. We have a meeting scheduled right now for the twenty eighth, do we need it? Naomi and I say no.
I think we have the, the reason for that meeting, I mean, there's nothing on the agenda evidently. But the zoning, it would really to be to refine everything that we refined tonight.
Right, we did our due diligence.
I think we did tonight.
We can still change things in the first meeting in January, can't we?
Yeah, you have to have at least something that's posted, I give people a rap.
We could take a whole paragraph, throw it away.
Yeah, it's the last one.
We could decide not to move forward or something.
Right. Right, twenty fifth is the one, we can only get rid of the period after road and that type of thing.
Right. The daddy gene copy, odd.
Well, we wanted to try to be as close as possible after tonight, so that.
You have to forgive me, things like that leap out right into my eyes.
That's a good thing. Somebody has to look at it.
I move we'd not meet on the twenty eighth.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Are we done?
Move to adjourn.
I'm not gonna second it, good. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.